It is 6:33. I'm calling this meeting of Landale City Council to order. I'm gonna ask the city, Assistant City Clerk to give us the roll call, please.
Mayor Protemp Curry here. Councilmember Suarez.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman Gorman.
Here.
Councilmember Quavis.
Here.
Mayor Pullen Myers.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you, sir. The next item on our agenda is our ceremonial portion. Oh, we can include this one time. Flag still. I'm gonna ask Councilmember Suarez to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand. Face the clock. Ready, begin.
I have the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the States. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
I'm gonna invite to the podium for our word of inspiration tonight from the Restoration Life Church Pastor Maximilian Uel.
Yes, sir.
Mencora Hightower.
Good evening. Let me share scripture with you first. Proverbs 11, verse 14 says, "Where there is no guidance, a people falls; but in an abundance of counselors, there is safety." Father, we thank you for this wonderful group of leaders, the people who have been entrusted with the responsibility of upkeeping and looking after the well-being of the city of Landale. Father, we lift up those who serve in public services with our law enforcement and emergency services. Father, protect them and their family. Father, continue to give us guidance and wisdom on how to move this city forward in unity. Thank you for allowing us to return to this gathering and allow us to fulfill your will. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Uel for joining us today. Thank you. All right, moving right along. Let's hear our public safety report. Captain Allen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm here tonight to present the public safety report for June 20th through July 18th. On June 23rd in the morning, South Los Angeles Station Traffic Office made an arrest on the hit-and-run fatality that occurred on June 15th at 154th Street and Freeman Avenue. The detectives followed leads and tracked down witnesses and footage which enabled them to make an arrest of a male driver of the suspect vehicle. The vehicle has been impounded pending further processing. The investigation is still ongoing. The suspect was arrested for felony hit-and-run and vehicular manslaughter and booked at South Los Angeles Station. On June 25th in the morning Detective Jose Torres identified the Bellagio car wash burglary suspect after learning of a string of burglaries which occurred in Redondo Beach and Torrance. The suspect was responsible for 19 burglaries in their cities. The suspect was arrested and booked at South Los Angeles Station for burglary. Now, in regards to our Fourth of July operation. During the seven-week pre-holiday deployment of the SAOs, they were only able to issue three citations due to the highly sporadic nature of illegal fireworks activity. During the four nights of the primary service, which was July 2nd through July 5th, during the four nights deputies were deployed in marked black-and-white patrol vehicles for visible police presence and undercover vehicles in an attempt to catch illegal firework violators undetected. July 2nd and 3rd yielded 10 citations and confiscation of 19 pieces of illegal fireworks. July 4th, during the daylight hours, SAOs made a visible presence through Landale while the undercover vehicles also drove throughout the city. Although the SAOs received the firework calls for service and responded to them, both the SAOs and the undercover units conducted surveillances and attempted to locate the source of the complainant by fine-tuning visually where the exact location was. However, there was virtually no place for deputies to park their patrol vehicles or undercover vehicles without blocking the streets or driveway. All the parking places were occupied by residents and their guests. The deputies had to slowly travel at less than 25 miles an hour through the congested streets filled with cars, partygoers, or firework paraphernalia. On the flip side, the good thing was that more Landale residents this year were actually using legal fireworks, hence a lot more people in the streets, sidewalks, and things of that nature. As the deputies sighted people and confiscated illegal fireworks, the barrage of explosions slowly tapered off block by block. There were more, excuse me, there were more illegal fireworks activities south of Manhattan Beach Boulevard than in the north, and so we concentrated our enforcement in those areas trying to deter illegal fireworks activity. The illegal fireworks activity was far less citywide than this year than last. Illegal fireworks activity tapered off by 10:30 PM. By midnight, the illegal fireworks activity had almost stopped. The deputies drove through every street and the illegal fireworks activity had lessened to pre-holiday levels, very sporadic and only one or two lightings. Compared to the areas surrounding Landale, which continued to have illegal fireworks activity well past midnight. July 5th was like our pre-holiday deployment with very little illegal fireworks activity. So, just so you have, July 2nd, we had seven calls for service. There was three citations with seven fireworks confiscated. July 3rd, we had 18 calls for service with seven citations and 12 fireworks confiscated. July 14th, 17 calls for service, 16 citations given with 81 fireworks confiscations. And then July 5th, we had five calls for service and no citations and no fireworks citations were issued. Overall, we believe this was a very successful operation this year. Through with the City Manager and your staff, we're gonna look at everything that we did, right? What needs to be approved upon to make this operation better next year, but we definitely feel that it was successful. And if you have any questions for me, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Okay, thank you for the report. Are there any questions of the captain's public safety report? Councilwoman Hoffman.
Captain Allen, I would just like to say to you and to Lieutenant Leo, thank you for all that you did. At the time when we get to items from Council, I'll expound a little bit on some of my ideas on fireworks.
Okay. Captain, I want to thank you for the report. I want to thank your deputies as well, and I did also experience a marked decrease, although it was loud. But it was neither less a decrease, and I think it was effective, our new program, and hope to build upon that program so that we can reduce the amount of illegal fireworks for next year moving forward. But it was noticeable. I didn't get nearly as many calls on the Fourth of July night as I did previously last year. Of course, City Hall is closed at night, but you know, when you come back Monday or whenever it was, you know, I only had one call and there was a marked decrease from last year. So although, you know, we can stand, I always stand some improvement to build upon it, it was effective. In my quadrant, it was much quieter than it was before last year. Some of the fireworks, I couldn't tell if it was coming from Hawthorne or Landale or Inglewood. Some of them was just that loud, because I was told Inglewood was, you know, pretty loud as well. But I just wanted to make a point to thank you and your deputies for hard work, and we will continue on.
Definitely.
Anyone else have anything they want to add on the public safety? Thank you, Captain, for that report. Okay, let's move our agenda. We are now on oral communications. Oral communications is when you have an opportunity to speak to this body, the City Council, on items that are not on the agenda, if you'd like to do so. This time, we ask that you will basically line up a flag when it becomes your turn, just approach the podium, and if you can start with your name, we appreciate it. In about two minutes, the amber light will come on to have you to signal to wrap things up for a total of three minutes. Yes, sir. You're first.
Good evening, City Council. I'm gonna read a prepared statement. My name is Rod Corpru. I've been working with the Maintenance Department for 13 years. I enjoy my job and I work very hard to keep the cities clean, maintain a good working order. I'm sad to report to that I have suffered racial harassment and discrimination from my supervisors and coworkers. And I've endured racial slurs and many other names that I'm being lazy or stupid. One even called me the N-word while the other lead man had a good laugh. My manager, former manager, used to touch me inappropriately. And President Manager once called me Pookie, even though I told him not to. He said Pookie meant lazy. I served my country in the United States Marine Corps for eight years, and I took my complaints up the chain of command. When I got to HR, they did not take corrective action, and the conduct continued, even calling me the Y and E B word. I've been a Maintenance Worker One for my entire 13 years. Twice applied for Maintenance Worker Two position, most recently in 2019. In the Oil Board interview, I was ranked number one. And even the previous Director of Public Works, Kohono, he even admitted that he was supposed to follow the Oil Board ranking, but instead picked a more junior employee to promote over me. And just so happened to be one of the other guys that was racially harassing me. This was so unfair and felt wrong, I felt no choice but to file lawsuit in Los Angeles Superior Court. And now, there's even more retaliation on some levels, making my work environment hostile and hell. For example, February 2020, my immediate supervisor, one of the ones who racially harassed me, wrote me up for abandoning my job. I hurt my shoulder. He wrote me up three days after I went to the company doctor. The company doctor issued me a restriction, and the MRI showed my shoulder.
Thank you. Time is expired.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
On August, on July 5th, my thoughts on the Landale suppression plan can only be that this is a boondoggle and a total disappointment to anyone who believed that the Fourth was going to be different from the past decade. I want to believe that enforcement efforts was taking place, but I never saw any city vehicle in my area on the Fourth of the week preceding when I was reporting illegal fireworks. As in prior years, the barrage of illegal fireworks went uninterrupted for hours on July 4th. The Sheriff's Department July 8 summary of the suppression plan reported that on July 4th, there were only 17 calls for service. Am I missing something here? I called at least five times on July 4th. When I asked for tag numbers on my call at 9:15, I was given tag number 175, and at 10:15 PM, it was tagged 220. At 12:32 AM, I was given tag number 15. The same report states that desk personnel received the most calls ever tallied. On July 4th, 2017, a City of Landale-funded task force for the suppression of illegal fireworks issued 39 citations for illegal fireworks on July 4th. This was before administrative citations were prevalent. That year, they confiscated 182 pounds of illegal fireworks. This year, for the period of July 2nd to July 4th, only 29 citations were issued with only 16 for July 4th. For the same period, total fireworks confiscated were 100. The report does not specify this was pounds. There were two families on my block that actually produced safe and sane fireworks, and that lasted less than an hour. Beginning in broad daylight, the mortars started flying, blasting the neighborhood, and setting off car alarms late into the night. These were not single exploratory blasts testing to see if enforcement was about. These were in-your-face serial mortars that spanned quarter-hours and took the city hostage for the rest of the night. Landale was fortunate that nothing ignited as winds blew the mortars over the rooftops and trees. I had excuses from the dispatcher who claimed that all neighborhoods were under siege, which is why absolutely nothing diminished the mortars' constant barrage. There were no breaks to indicate that a black-and-white or unmarked vehicle ever responded to the calls reporting houses that were a problem last year, the year before that, and the years before that. Had one citation been issued in my neighborhood, perhaps it would have made a difference and given pause to these serial criminals thumbing their noses at the banners, signs, and letters. The lack of enforcement makes every resident standing up in protest a target. Obviously, three unmarked vehicles and two patrol vehicles are not sufficient to keep this under control. As recommended previously and other cities do, the fire manufacturers need to contribute to pay for additional patrol units over and above what was on the streets this year. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Pam London, Landale resident. At the last meeting, City Council discussed bringing back the Parkway issue. Please see copies of the hoops that I had to jump through when I did my Parkway. You'll notice the city required proof of insurance, that Landale be listed as additional insured. Notice the minimum liability insurance limit requirements. Gorman's compensation insurance policy, state licensed contractor, all of these requirements were met for my project, only my project. And with the last Public Works Director, and you know who I'm talking to, the moron, he didn't even understand why there were requirements. So, go ahead and continue to be lax in your enforcement. Water it down further. Typical Landale. Can anyone see the lawsuits that may come your way? You now have your City Manager turning back the clock on Landale. Code enforcement can't do anything unless they have a specific complaint. If the tattletale forgot to mention something, oh, well, code can't touch it. So, for all of you people who like dog poop, trash everywhere, weeds to your knees, no permits, you got your City Manager. That is totally on your side. As the city continues to get worse, don't go on Nextdoor complaining when you are too chicken to show up and show your face here. From my fan mail writer, "I do not live there anymore. I sold my house. I moved." For more than four months, I have not lived there. You called me a hippie. Whatever. It's a shame that you are so afraid to sign your name or put your address on your letter. Chicken. Yeah, you, whoever you are. Landale has lost its award-winning, top-notch professional CPA Director of Finance. All of you should be questioning why. Why did Council stand by and let this happen? Not Pat Kearney. Now, we get to play the game. Who can kiss the manager's ring the hardest? As he continues to destroy this city, put his yes people in position, Landale loses. If other department heads leave and you people sit back and take it, you are cowards and your voice should forever be silenced. Every time I argued for change, it was never just for my benefit. It was to help the city as a whole. For those of you who are only in it for yourself, we see you. As Landale continues to look worse, thank your City Manager and your City Council for the bang-up job. July 4th was incredible, more illegal fireworks than ever, if you ask me. Until all fireworks are banned, you will always prevent the Sheriff's Department from being able to do their job. Blow it up. That's the message you send.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Hello, Johnny London. To whomever sent the letter to my wife, male or female, you are a spineless waste of oxygen, such a loser. You could not even sign your name. Are you in the crowd? If so, speak up. If you're at home, attend the next meeting. Come here and voice your opinion of what the city needs to do or not to do. By the way, the mayor is there for everybody, not just you. Question, did you help him in the beginning? We did. If you didn't know, we sold the house, and to your delight, we will soon be leaving Landale for greener lawns and well-kept neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we're gonna close public comment and bring it up to the dials for any comments from the council. Let's see if Councilwoman Suarez has anything she would like to add.
No, I just want to thank everybody that came out tonight and spoke. Thank you. There were a lot of comments, and some of them regarding personnel issues, which I won't comment on, but other than that, thank you to everybody that attended. I'll pass it along.
Thank you. Councilwoman Quavis.
Thank you, everyone that spoke out. I will consider, or I'm taking notes on everything that was said so that I could use it and discuss it later on at other meetings.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hoffman Gorman.
I would just like to say to Pam and to Johnny, whatever this letter is, I completely apologize because I didn't know anybody was harassing you.
It's not your fault.
I don't care.
And I will, this is the first I'm hearing from you guys that you're leaving, and I'm sad about that. I think that you keep us on our toes, all of us. So, thank you for all that you've done. Thank you.
Mr. Protemp, Pat Kearney.
Yes, I want to thank everybody that spoke tonight. I would talk to Julian about this, this is the first time he's seen this. Thank you, Pam, for bringing it to our attention. And I believe the first speaker is an employee here, so that's a personnel matter, so we can discuss that. Is that correct, Mr. Kearney? And with that, I will, you know, I'll miss you too. Sometimes we, together, sometimes we're apart. I'm sorry about the emails, but I get those too. I've been called everything under the sign. With that, I'll pass it along to you, Robert.
Thank you, sir. First, I want to thank everyone who spoke tonight, particularly to Ms. London, thank you for this as well, this encroachment, permit requirement. I also want to say that Pam and Johnny, I'm London, sincerely, we are gonna miss you. Now, we've had, you know, we've had our relationship, you know, over the last couple of years or what have you, and whether you guys agree with me or we agree with each other, now we've always kept a cordial, you know, relationship and open dialogue, and I appreciate that. I mean, I appreciate, you know, the fact that you don't have to be disagreeable in order to get your point across, and that makes for great, you know, dialogue and great communications, and I appreciate that we've always had that type of dialogue and communications. And we will miss you guys when you leave the city. I don't know how far you're going, if you're gonna be out of the region or what have you, but we will miss you guys, and we appreciate your contributions here, because, you know, it takes the residents in partnership with the community to make sure that we move forward. Things will always move as fast as we would like for them to move, and sometimes things don't go as well as we would like for them to go. But if it wasn't for the involvement of people such as Pam London and Johnny, we wouldn't have, you know, some of the things that we have decided to do. It may took me a couple of times, a couple of visits, but you had a couple of victories there. I can name a few of them. You know them as well, but we do listen, and we do try to listen. And I think it was Johnny who mentioned that, I'm not sure which email you was talking about or what have you, that yes, the mayor is the mayor for everyone, and not, you know, one individual or one group of people or what have you. I'm not really sure what that's references or what have you, but that's definitely the case, and I thank you for pointing that out. And with that, I too would not speak on the personnel matter, but we will, of course, handle it as it is appropriate to do so. With that, I'll close public comment and close comments from the council, and we will continue our agenda. Item F is a consent calendar. There's four items on the consent calendar. What is the pleasure of this body concerning the consent calendar?
I have a question.
Okay, which item?
On item number one.
Okay, go ahead and pose it.
Have we researched getting a lease for maybe two to three years and see if the price for copiers would go down? Because I feel $18,000 for five copiers is a bit high.
So, I'll go ahead and take this. I kind of took this over due to the lack of a finance director, but what we have right now is a lease for five copiers. I believe the prior amount was about $3,000 over the quoted amount, so I'm gonna knock it down a bit. What this is, is just a one-year extension, and then we're gonna go to RFP during this one-year extension to give the best cost for the city.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir.
It's on number two, of course.
Item number two.
The account's payable. I guess he has questions for Julian. There is three graffiti supplies on this account's payable, over $1,500 in graffiti. It seems like it's every month $1,500. Where's all this stuff going? And the second one is on the very second-to-last page where it says, Powerstride Batteries, two new batteries for $4.82. Do you have to buy two batteries for one vehicle?
Thank you, Mayor Protemp. As far as the graffiti, increasing graffiti since January has increased our cost quite a bit. Instead of having approximately about 100 graffitis, since March, April, and May, we have almost 550 locations that we had to respond to. So that has increased the paint cost quite a bit. So, if you require us, we'll take a look at that invoice one more time, but because of the increase in number of graffiti has that increased. As far as the battery, I do believe the battery was for not a regular car, but for a heavy utility truck, and those have cost a little more than just regular batteries.
So, there's two batteries in that truck?
I do believe so, yes.
Could you check that out for me?
Yeah, I'll find that. Thank you, sir.
And are we recouping any money from the owners that we do the graffiti for?
Some of the owners are providing us with the paints to match their property, but again, we are providing the manual labor to remove the graffiti, especially gamma-related ones or provocative graffitis.
Those are my questions, Robert.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, if there's not any more questions, if there aren't any more questions on the consent calendar, I will entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
I'll go ahead and motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay, the motion's been made that we approve the consent calendar by Quavis and seconded by Kearney. Is there any discussion on the motion? CNN, I'm gonna ask the council to vote on the consent calendar.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, sir. Next item on our agenda under administration is item five. Item five is a revision to the Personnel Summary for the Fiscal Year 2021-2022 Budget, something that was inadvertently left out for approval. Which is the $20,000, $20,000 for the office assistant, part-time office assistant, which wasn't included in the budget, but it was not included in the Personnel Summary by program and by division schedule. And the staff is asking that we ratify the changes in the attached Personnel Summary by program by Personnel Summary Division so that that's complete. So, it'll be a revision to the Personnel Summary Fiscal Year 2021-2022 for the budget. Is there any questions on this item?
So, this is just an oversight. There's no additional cost to our budget.
There's no additional, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. City Manager, there's no additional to our budget, just that it was not included in the Personnel Summary, which it should have been in that Personnel Summary by program division, but it was included in the budget.
Yes, that is correct. It was included in the budget, and Mayor Protemp is correct. It was simply an oversight.
Absolutely. I'll entertain a motion that we ratify it so that it would be included in the Personnel Summary by program. Okay.
I'll second that.
Yes, ma'am. So, the motion was made by Kearney that we approve the staff recommendation to ratify, ratify the attached Personnel Summary by program and Personnel Summary, and it was seconded by Quavis. Is there any discussion on the motion? CNN with the council, please vote.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, sir. Next item on agenda is the annual League of Cities, League of California Cities Annual Conference. The recommendation is that the cities select a delegate in and alternate to represent the city at the 21 League of Cities Annual Conference. Basically, we do this every year. They require us to actually appoint someone by resolution, and this person will be, will serve rather, as the delegate to vote during the conference. As you can see on page six, not page six, but it's item six. As you can see on page six, not page six, but it's item six, and it has a six at the, it's the first page, the delegates in the past, so that'd give you the idea of who has served as delegates in the past. So, the first question would be, who would be interested in attending? Obviously, you have to attend in order to be a delegate, right? So, if anyone was looking to go to the conference?
I would like to attend if possible.
Okay, so Quavis liked to attend. Who would like to be a delegate? Would you like to be the voting delegate? Quavis like to, can you serve as the voting delegate?
Sure. Yeah, I'll find you.
Okay, so, so let's put Quavis as the voting delegate. Okay. Anyone else plan on attending? I don't think I'll be able to attend this year. Anyone? I mean, we don't have to have an alternate, but alternate is just in case, if someone was going to attend. But if you're not going to attend, then you can't be an alternate. It's in Sacramento this year.
Sacramento.
No, no, take us.
I'll figure an alternate.
You'll be, yeah. Still, let me see, go.
Well, she don't, yeah.
Okay, okay, okay. So, for the, okay, so for the resolution is concerned, let's have Quavis as our delegate, and Kearney will serve as the alternate for the 2021 League of Cities Annual Conference. And I think they want us to take an actual vote on this to make sure that we're okay, because there's a resolution. Okay, let's have a motion to ratify the appointment of those two individuals.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, the motion's been made by Schorres.
And I'll second it.
And seconded by Hoff and Gorman, that we appoint Quavis as the delegate and Kearney as the alternate delegate to the 2021 League of City, California Cities Annual Conference. Any discussion on the motion? CNN, I'm going to ask the council to please vote.
For item six, motion passes five zero.
Thank you. All righty, we're now on item H, City Managers' Report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. I just wanted to spend a moment to discuss something we've already talked about, a little bit about already, our city's illegal fireworks suppression plan. I want to thank the captain for his comments regarding their activities. Also, I want to thank the residents for their comments regarding how the plan went. I just wanted to restate from the beginning, when staff first brought this forward for the council as a plan for addressing illegal fireworks and how bad it was last year, it was, I stated that this was an attempt to try to improve the situation. We were under no illusion that this was going to completely eliminate the problem that we have here in town, like in other cities, but we wanted to have a plan in place to try to help make a difference. And I think we were able to do that. In total, we were able to issue thirty-two citations, which I think is important in making for a deterrent for the future. The financial impact that those citations will have on those that violated the city's ordinance regarding illegal fireworks, I think will make an impact, and it'll make people at the very least think twice about using illegal fireworks in the future, because it was a thousand dollars for the citation. It's progressive to two thousand dollars for subsequent violations, and it's over a five-year period at specific locations. So, it's something that will stick over time, and it's not something that just gets reset. So, we really believe that this will become a deterrent. And while we do think that, you know, we did experience success with the program this year, as the captain alluded to, we will be doing a debriefing with deputies later on this week to discuss things that went well, maybe things that didn't go quite as well operationally, and so we'll learn from that, and we'll suggest improvements for next year. In addition to that, we'll also look at new elements that we can include with our program to make the program even more successful and make for even more of a deterrent in the future. So, you know, this is something where we hope the program that we put in place this year will build on itself over the years to come, and we'll learn from our program, we'll learn from what other cities are doing as well, and we'll try to create even more of a dent in this problem that we've had. So, with that, I too want to thank our staff for all the work that we put into in terms of the information campaign, getting information out, letting our residents know about what our enforcement efforts were going to be. And then I especially want to thank Captain Allen and Lieutenant Leo and all of the deputies that were involved in making the effort to really get out there and get around from, you know, area to area around Lawndale to find those that were, you know, again, violating our ordinance and seeking out and issuing the citation. So, I want to thank them for that, because without them, we couldn't have, you know, had the success that we did this year. So, that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Okay, let's have items from council members. Let's start with Schorres. Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mayor. I did attend the South Bay Cities Council of Government Board of Directors meeting. I just wanted to give a shout out to the Mayor Pro Temp, Olivia Valentine from Hawthorne, for her service as chairperson, and we welcomed incoming Chairperson, Mayor Drew Boils, from the City of El Segundo. So, we look forward to having them serve in that capacity. With that, I'll pass it along.
Councilwoman Quavis.
I have two things that I would like to talk about is possibly having or looking into having the fireworks stand owners pay for the suppression, for the fireworks suppression, illegal fireworks suppression. I don't believe that we had enough tickets or not taken citations to, for us to cover the expense. So, I think the fireworks owners or the companies should be putting a portion of that, and there's something to consider for next year. The other thing is, is it possible for us to get a report where, that talks about where the graffiti has been found and erased, so we could keep tally of if it's the same area being hit several times for the sheriff to focus in those areas? That will be all.
Let's see if we can get a quick response.
Sure. Yes, thank you, Councilwoman Quavis. With regard to the illegal fireworks, that is actually something that is on our list for next year, so we will certainly explore. And I think this was even brought up by our resident about looking at working with the fireworks companies, whether it be TNT or Phantom, et cetera, whichever companies are intended.
Yes, Mr. Randall brought it up, and I wanted to follow on that.
Yes. So, when it was brought up, we thought it was a good idea. We were ready, you know, heavily involved and ready to implement our plan. So, it was sort of too late for this year, but we did note it, and it's something that we will certainly look into for next year. I think it's a good idea, and, you know, if we can, you know, work with those companies and get a few bucks out of them, hopefully more than a few bucks, to help supplement our plan, we definitely want to do that. Just a quick comment on the citations, thirty-two citations this year. Last year was less than twenty, I think it was, so we did more than, almost doubled the number of citations. So, from that aspect, that's why I look at this as being a success. And then to your other question, I'm sorry.
The graffiti report.
Yes, graffiti. We can certainly do that. I mean, we collect data on graffiti and locations where the graffiti occurs and where we remove it. We do take pictures. We provide those pictures to the Sheriff's Department, show that, so that they have an understanding of the type of graffiti that's out there, whether it's just a tag, you know, if it's meant to be artful, or if it is gang-related. So, we want to make the Sheriff's Department aware of that, so that they can have an understanding of gang activity if that's the case. And, you know, so I guess the answer is yes, we can come up with a report that shows where graffiti is being done.
That's why I'm asking for the report, because we're seeing the expense in paint. So, if it's the same spot, let's say it's a business, I feel that the business owner should be paying for the paint that we're using in that location.
Yeah.
If it's a continuous tag.
Well, typically, you know, our graffiti efforts are mainly in public areas. Where it is on private property, we typically allow that. We typically have property owner take care of those incidents of graffiti. However, if the graffiti is on private property and it's gang-related, and it's in a location where the city can easily cover the graffiti. So, for example, if it's on a private property wall, right next to a sidewalk where it's, where there's easy access to remove it, our practice has been to remove it, because we don't want gang graffiti. You know, we want to have gang graffiti for the shortest period of time as possible. So, in cases like that, we will remove it from private property. However, if it's more on the interior of a property, not accessible for us, we would have to go on to private property to remove it, we leave that to the private property owner.
And then, can, let me piggyback on that. Can you speak to the reimbursement that we seek from commercial properties? We, they are charged with reimbursing us, from my understanding.
I'm going to defer that to Julian, if he could answer that more specifically.
As far as graffiti, the, we do provide the labors, and the, again, as City Manager said, that the residents or the business owner provide us with the paint. So, again, we do provide the labor, but we don't request a reimbursement for that labor of removing those graffitis.
But if they have a, if they have a citation because they haven't removed the graffiti, then the citation, of course, has a amount assigned to the citation.
Correct, correct.
But it's because they have the graffiti and they haven't removed it, right?
Correct.
So, that in a sense is, I guess that would be, that would be equivalent as them reimbursing. It's not for the hours, but for the act, but for the actual paint.
I do believe so. I don't, I don't know the, as far as the code enforcement, as far as graffiti tickets. Michael, if you could.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. Yeah, we do open code cases on properties that have graffiti on them, whether private residence or commercial properties. The thing with code flipping, though, is it not immediate. We'll handle it immediately, but we give them time to correct it. There's a warning, second warning, third warning before the first citation is issued. So, graffiti on Manhattan Beach Boulevard and Hawthorne, for instance, it might be there for a month, month and a half, before they even get cited. We don't require them to take it down immediately, just like we don't require residents to get permits immediately. We give them time to correct it. We can look into changing that, having different standards for commercial properties, but rather than private residences. We currently don't, but it's not an immediate. I mean, we'll immediately send them a notice, but then they'll know they're getting a second notice and a third notice before they have to really put out the money to fix it. So, we do address it right away, but again, that's with all things. That's a standard for all our code cases. There is a three, three warnings before the first citation. So, we could, we could examine the possibility of changing that, though.
So, if they get a citation, does the citation cover the expense of the, our employee removing the graffiti?
The citation, the first citation would be for a hundred dollars. Two weeks after that, they would get a second citation for two hundred and fifty, and then the final citation would be five hundred dollars before it's turned over to the city attorney. We do have cases now for properties that have graffiti in places we can't reach. We have a case against one of the properties that you can see from the freeway on the third floor of that campus, that auto body shop. We have a, that's in, that's being handed over to our city attorneys, because they've gotten three sites already and haven't corrected it. So...
But let's say Julian sends his team to remove the graffiti, and it's seven hundred and fifty dollars, and the citation is only for five hundred dollars.
Right. Yeah, in that case, we went to a group.
Shouldn't we charge him the cost of sending our team to remove the graffiti?
Sure. My understanding is that we'd have to, if we were upping the amounts of the citation, I think that would have to go through the fee schedule process. We can't just arbitrarily raise the amounts. So, I mean, we'd be open to that. The fireworks citation, for instance, started a thousand dollars. There's no warnings on those. You just get the citation. That's true also vending. There's no point in warning the vendor. We're just going to cite them. But for all the homeowners and all the business owners, we do give them that time to correct it on their own. So, by the time it gets that first citation, a hundred dollars, I don't think it'd cost a hundred dollars to send our graffiti team out. I'm sure it costs more than that, just for time and paint. So, I, in that respect, I don't think we'd be recouping our losses, our costs.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Well, before Michael walks away too far, to piggyback off of what Shirley was just asking, I'm going to ask something along the same. It is my understanding that a commercial piece of property citation process is just the same as a residential.
That is correct.
And my concern is that two hundred and fifty dollars for a resident is probably a really big deal. But when we're talking about a commercial business, two hundred and fifty dollars is a drop in the bucket. I do think that we need to relook at that ordinance and evaluate commercial versus resident.
Sure. We'd be open to that. I think there's logic to that. I would add that, you know, a property with multiple violations, graffiti, inoperable vehicles, overgrown landscaping, that would, they'd get a citation for each violation. So, one property might have five violations, starting at a hundred dollars per violation. So, the first site would be five hundred dollars. Second would be twelve hundred and fifty dollars if they haven't corrected it, and by the, by the third citation, they're getting twenty-five hundred dollars in citations, five hundred per violation. But again, even then, it's still not a tremendous amount for a commercial property. Twenty-five hundred dollars is not...
Well, I would like to revisit that, if at all possible, and take a look at the difference. I don't feel that the commercial guy, it impacts nearly as much as that residential guy. So, I would like to see it be evaluated. The next thing I have is...
Before you go on, let me see. Yeah, I had a conversation with the Director Reyes on a commercial piece of property, and that's exactly what we spoke about, narrowing the time for compliance for commercial property versus that of residential property. So, we're definitely in agreeance there, because I didn't really realize that, that they pretty much had the same timeline, you know, but if they're, if it's a commercial property, and let's say if they don't even live in the city, for whatever reason, they may not inspect the property or feel the, feel the need to act immediately, if you will. So, I would like to, like you said, narrow down, down the time for compliance and accelerate, if you will, the amount of citations or what have you. Obviously, these are for those who are not acting in good faith, you know. If the director feels they're acting in good faith and they're moving rapidly, that's one thing. But as you know, sometimes you don't get response from what the director was telling me on this call. So, we definitely agree with that, so we can put that on the agenda for a later date. I would...
Yeah, we'd be open to that, and that would actually help us in our efforts, too, to have a shortened amount of time for commercial properties and a higher amount of fee schedule for...
Right. So, residential also being evaluated on the amount of time that they get to as well.
Correct, correct. And commercial properties are much more visible than residential violations. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead with your items.
So, I did attend on the twenty-ninth of June, the meeting with Metro with the mayor. So, that was what I have been out doing. But I said that I wanted to get back and talk a little bit about my own ideas about fireworks myself. Just like everybody else that I have spoke to, I've got a lot of unhappiness where it comes to fireworks, the effects that it has on our residents, whether it be a baby or a senior that has PTSD, our pets. I personally have lost a pet due to fireworks and these bombs that are being exploded on our street. I'm concerned about those of us that have breathing issues and the AQMD and the problems that the fireworks in our area leave for our residents. I'm really concerned over the fact we're in a drought, and these things are exploding over our houses. And our houses are packed. You can go down, a two-bedroom house is going to have, I was told by one of my principals of one of our kids' school, that he knew of nineteen individuals living in a two-bedroom house. We are... We are packed. With drought, this is not good. And the last one that I just find atrocious is the people that are enjoying the fireworks, the litter that they leave behind. For those of us that don't participate, to clean up, and I don't think that that is appropriate. So with those thoughts in mind, I'm going to make a few suggestions and ask for a couple of things. I too want to revisit the fireworks suppression ordinance, and I want to look about raising the fines to where, the first one could be a thousand bucks, the second one, two thousand bucks, the third one, three thousand bucks, when we have an individual who, on more than one time in a twenty-four-hour period, has had three citations, it needs to hurt, and it needs to hurt bad enough that our property owners, I want to increase, and I want to talk about what we are doing there as well. If I were a property owner and I rented, I would have a clause in my rental agreement that says you won't be using these things. That would be my idea. Another thing, I would like to see during the fireworks suppression time, we've asked the, the Sheriff's Department to step up, and we've changed their hours, I think it's appropriate to ask for our parking enforcement to do the same. One of the complaints I heard from our officers, they're busy watching a house, there's no place along our streets to pull over and continue observing. What do they have to do? Here comes a car behind them, they have to turn around and move and interrupt themselves. I think that it would be a really good thing to have the park, parking enforcers be out at night, too. Let's clear up some of that street. The next piece gets a little bit touchy. I would like to have some information, because I don't think necessarily we're going to get rid of the illegal fireworks without some real looking into some of these things. And when I'm saying, when I'm getting ready to say, I'm a little nervous about it, because even I don't know what I'm, I'm thinking at the time. Other than the fact, the only thing good I feel about the fireworks stands and the legal fireworks is the fact that they support our youth. I would like to look into ways on if we were to stop fireworks and the legal fireworks, what kind of options would we have to support some of our youth? And the last thing that I'm interested in, I would like information on possibly putting a moratorium on all fireworks for a period of time, and what that would look like. That's all I have.
Thank you. Let's hear from Mr. Pat Kearney.
Yes, I attended the Lobby Trust Oversight Committee with City Manager, I think Kevin was there, I'm not sure, and this is your name, but anyway, Rhonda, I understand what you're saying, but you ban fireworks, illegal fireworks, it's a double-edged sword. Kids are used to seeing fireworks, so if you don't have illegal ones, play and buy illegal ones, so it's going to be twofold. I was in Utah recently, on Fourth of July, and that state's almost dry, there's two counties that sell fireworks, and you walk into any Sam's Club, any Costco, any Walmart, and buy illegal fireworks in there. So I, I understand what you're saying, but I think it's a double-edged sword, I think we're going to do more harm than good.
I don't know what it would look like, that's what I'm saying, I, I, we'd have to talk about it.
But I do like the idea of raising that price on things, on the citations, I think thirty-six thousand dollars is not bad this year, it pays for, I think pays off for our deputies we hired this year, correct? Am I correct? Do you think, what are we paying? So the left off or left over? I agree with you on one point, but I think it's a double-edged sword if we get rid of the fireworks. You say the youth could, well.
But Pat, I'm not asking to get rid of them, only a moratorium, let's get this thing under control.
Yeah, okay, with that, I'll turn over to you. Thanks, Ralph.
Thank you, Mayor Portem. And I attended, well, I have one thing I always wanted to report on, I did attend the special meeting of the sanitation district, actually the joint sanitation districts of all the districts that's in the, in the district, and we discussed a settlement, a possible settlement agreement with the county concerning Fuente Hills and Lands, Landsfield, we had some issues there with the county is building a park on part of the, the Landsfield, it's actually owned by the district, and we had a couple of disagreements, but it sounds as if we come into an agreement on the use of the properties that's owned by the, the joint districts. And so that was in a special meeting, we're going to have another meeting pretty soon here in the next couple of weeks to actually ratify the settlement agreement with LA County Board of Supervisors, and that's all I have to report. We do have a closed session tonight, where we will meet on a conference with our labor negotiations, and I'm going to ask the city attorney to give the provisions of the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that is Government Code Section 54957.6, and the city council will be meeting with the city's negotiators regarding labor negotiations with the representative employees. Thank you very much, sir.
Yes, we will adjourn to the closed session. Concluded our closed session, I'm going to ask the city attorney to give the report of the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council was briefed on the labor negotiations, no reportable actions were taken this evening. That's the report, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. It is now time to adjourn. I just wanted to make an announcement that Shirley Bennett, a former Lawndale Elementary School board member, recently passed away, and our condolences go to her, her family. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Hoffmann-Gorman to provide a few comments.
Shirley was a longtime Lawndale resident who participated with all of the children of Lawndale. She was active both at Jane Adams Elementary School and Jane Adams Junior High School. She was a published author, her book is currently on Amazon, and I got word today that she had passed away, and there is a GoFundMe page for anybody wishing to leave a little something there. Thank you.
Thank you. Shirley would surely be missed by the Lawndale community, and our condolences once again go out to her family, and we will adjourn this meeting in her memory of tonight. The next regular scheduled meeting of the Lawndale City Council will be held at six thirty PM on Monday, August the second, twenty twenty-one, it is now eight twelve, and this meeting is adjourned.[1794.13]